You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
...the March 27th meeting of the planning board here with all. I'll be giving a roll call. Scott Self, I'm here. Richard Lang, through Marcus Calero. To Brandon Self, here. Michael A York.
Here.
Victoria Ames.
Here.
And Selecting this rep, Charles Harbeck.
Here.
And alternate Steve Malone, I guess he's my favorite. But alternate Steve Malone is not here. Alternate Jane Johnson is not here. And alternate Christine Reynolds. Christine Reynolds, sorry. So we have four boards, everybody can see anyone. So our agenda for this evening is approval of the minutes for February 27th and March 13th. Public hearing, or is there a continued public hearing from the 13th? Black Belt LLC has submitted an application for the construction of a driveway restaurant at the southern corner of Marcy Hill Road and Route 12. So a property is shown a tax amount $220,000 on five, located in the business district. And that any other business as may be required. So at the beginning of it, we don't need our usual motion for regional impact because there's nothing different on the land, so we will skip that. And we don't have Jane here to approve the February 27th meeting, so I mean, minutes, so we will postpone those until the next meeting. We need Jane here for that. And so moves us to the March 13th minutes. And we have a motion to approve the March 13th minutes. Motion made by Richard, seconded by Brandon. Is there any further discussion? Anything like that?
Two weeks, I think.
If not, all those in favor, indicate us any eye.
All right.
All those opposed. Okay, and it brings us to our continued public hearing, which is a site plan review. So how do we stand on those guys?
They are still waiting for their traffic study.
Yeah, and then it said the last time, what, might be five weeks or something like that?
Yeah.
So they still stand by that, or you heard wrong?
Still standing by it.
Okay. So let's see. And then their 65 days are up on April 19th. And they've already said that they would be up for extending it if the planning board wishes to do so, which is the reason why the planning board shouldn't do that. So if we extended them another 65 days, that would bring them into June 23rd. And that would be plenty of time for them to get their traffic study done. So let's see, that'd give us probably five more meetings in between there. And their traffic study, if it's five weeks, I don't know, it would be maybe in May or something if they get it like that, so. Does that sound like we ought to do that? Give them an extension? Okay, motion to extend them another 65 days. Correct. And that would give them till, what is that, June 23rd?
Does that mean that they could show up at any point between now and then?
No, no, no. We will schedule them, we'll do that motion after this. We'll make a motion to give them an extension if they want to. And then after this, we will say when that next meeting is going to be. It's going to be continued public hearing, we have to give the date certain. So, motion by Michael A York to extend them another 65 days, is there a second? Second by Richard, is there any further discussion?
Just wondering why 65 day increment?
It may not take 65 days, but we might as well give them another 65 days, I gave them until, I think it was June, sometime in June there. So that should be plenty of time for them to get their drawings revised and their traffic study done. And it gives the planning board more time to look into whatever they have proposed because they don't have a tenant to go in. So they're not really early on their part, and there's no real hurry on our part either. As long as we, you know, let the, we'll let the residents know, or our bidders know at these meetings when the next public hearing is going to be, so they can be here for that. So, which brings us to that.
Are you having a motion? I'm voting no.
Yeah, okay. Anybody, any other further discussions? Then all those in favor? Nope, no, we're having a motion. All those in favor indicate us any eye?
All right.
All those opposed? Yes.
Well, my question is, why?
Can you say your name, please?
Oh, I may have got it, Seth. I'm just curious, because obviously I've never done these board meetings, but why is it such a push to extend for something on a property that hasn't been allowed to have any type of building on in that same location since like the 80s? So I guess, I just don't understand.
It's not a push, it's a consideration, and it's, yeah, it's not a push to do it. But if, there's nothing really that, the board, myself and the board, I guess, too, can see why they shouldn't get an extension. I mean, there's no real reason why they shouldn't. So it's, we're extending them courtesy, as long as the planning board agrees to it and the applicant agrees to it, it can extend beyond the 65 days. And it can extend to whatever the planning board wants it to extend. The statutes say we have to deal with a project within 65 days. That's to protect the applicant, so the planning board just can't string them on forever and have them back and forth at work meetings and run them out of money or whatever they want to do. The state says you guys have to make a decision in 65 days unless the applicant agrees to an extension and the planning board agrees to an extension, which is what we just did here. But again, there's no push to it, it's just a consideration.
It just seems like he's on the agreeance of trying to like continue it, so I'm just, I'm just on looking, just because I'm a budding property owner, and I have literally slept my entire life there, minus like a few years in my early twenties. And I've watched the change of the wetlands, and I've seen the property exactly next to him at 427. The wetland area in behind used to be so much smaller and overgrown, and I was just looking at it the other day, and it's, it's all water, and that's coming towards me. So that's why I'm just wondering why.
We'll discuss all those things when we continue the public hearing, because those pretty much are public hearing matters to discuss.
Yeah.
We're going to continue the public hearing, and we're doing it now, but continuing public hearing, while the rest of the residents and stuff, our bidders are here. But yeah, so your concern there, and the diversity concerns, just bring Mark down. Meeting's only going to be the next public hearing.
Okay.
Which brings us to that. Let's see. They're going to have the traffic study done for a while. So let's see. So I'm thinking in May, they may have their traffic, so let's, there's no sense continuing this public hearing until the next meeting, and then the next one after that, until they finally get it. As long as we set a date certain for the abutters, then they will know when the public hearing is going to be, we can schedule a few meetings. So I would suggest we do it, schedule it for the May 8th meeting. That's our first meeting.
I understand what you're saying, but in the last, our last meeting, I believe you stated that it had to be done per meeting.
Yeah, we're going to do a meeting to meeting, but we're, we're extending it. Yeah, just, I figured that they would be back, you know, with their traffic study, or they have something for us at one meeting, or the next meeting, the next meeting, but it doesn't look like they are coming. They haven't been back here, and Adam's, they aren't going to have their traffic study still done for another five weeks until it's the last meeting. So we can extend it, we can schedule a few meetings as long as we give it a date and time certain for that meeting for the abutters. But yeah, I did say that.
No, I'm not disagreeing.
Yeah, no.
But I'm just stating that with the set.
Yeah.
And we don't, you know, I'm not really in conflict with what you said.
And again, yeah, that was just to give them a chance to come in and state a case or give us updates, but I don't think they're going to do that.
That would also give them time to redesign their site.
They need to do that as well.
Do they do a redo design?
They do, yeah, right.
So, so our agendas will not show continuation of that site plan review every agenda from today until then?
Unless we want to, unless we go to it, but I don't think there's going to be anything that has to happen.
I'd rather not, because then people are going to come around.
Exactly, well, they kind of have to come, yeah, it's scheduled for that. And again, if it doesn't look like Adam's does too, it doesn't look like they're going to be back with anything until they get their track, that traffic study. So we can bring it to our first meeting in, in May, they should have all this stuff together by then, one of the things. So, that sounded all right, yes?
Yeah.
So we need.
I think it's better to start with the citizens.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah, so we need a motion in that regard to continue this public hearing until our meeting of May 8th. I'll give that motion, motion by Brandon, is there a second?
I'll say.
Second by Michael, is there any further discussion?
If things are available prior to our extended number, or date, they can apply coming sooner than that?
No, no. Okay. No, May 8th. Okay, all those in favor indicate us any eye?
All right.
All those opposed? Okay, it'll be May 8th. So you don't have to be coming here for a single meeting, but under that, I'm definitely.
I also recommend calling the planning office prior to the planning board meeting, just so you're not wasting your time coming down here. You can just call us, we'll let you know what's going on.
I've been trying to do a diligence, check the websites and seeing it, so I haven't seen, but to all you guys, is there any extension or?
One, two.
One extension, one, two.
So that, that you said this entire 65 days, you said that was up to the end of June, so we could set that on May 8th, we would still be in a position if they weren't ready, we would extend it?
It's about an essential, so, well, yeah, we may not extend it again. We'll see how ready they are. They don't seem to be ready or really know what they're doing, so the planning board can decide not to extend it, and just make a decision on it, and let them come back for another application.
So I just want to ask you, so, because obviously the May 8th, that's, we've extended it, so it'll go till June 23rd, but if they don't have it done by the May 8th, they're, it's up to you guys?
No, a few different things, yeah, I know, it's confusing. So we've given them until the 23rd of June, or actually, we've given ourselves till the 23rd of June to make a decision on this application.
Okay.
And we've decided to continue the public hearing, not to our next meeting, but until May 8th, to make certain that they get their traffic study in and all their drawings and everything here, so we can actually have a public hearing or continue public hearing.
Okay.
So.
So if they don't have it on May 8th, then?
If they don't have it on May 8th, we will continue it again, because we've given them an extension, we can continue always to.
Till June 23rd?
Probably a little bit, yeah, a little bit before the 23rd, because we'd be one meeting before that, three days before that. So it'd run out then, we'd have to make a decision on the last meeting before it runs out, whether or not we will come back to it. And let's see, what else? Not much, really, is there? We have, we did, we have, let's see, conditional use permits, anybody have any discussion on that?
Well, I looked through all of our, as far as concerned, every special exception we have could be a conditional use. And I keep, I say that because when they come in with their application, we have, we have all the information in front of us.
Yeah.
To make a decision on that.
Yeah.
And I feel this board can make a decision just as easily as a DVA can. Plus the fact that the DVA needs once a month, sometimes half for a month or two because they can't find enough members to show up. So are we going to get into this situation like we're talking about before where we're taking too long to make decisions?
So, you're talking about the special exception.
Right.
You know, and we're talking about conditional use, which are very similar, except that special exceptions can only be seen by the, by the DVA.
Right.
And they have the specific criteria that they have to go by.
Right.
If we set up conditional use permits, then we can use some of those criteria if we want, but we can also add on criteria as to what that special thing is going to be, that conditional permit for that specific part of the zoning, I will say wetlands, for instance. But special exceptions are all through our zoning ordinance, and we have them just for another set of eyes on, on whenever it's going to go in there. And you're right, it is like a conditional use permit, but yeah, it's, it's slightly different with, because you only have that, that limiting criteria. That criteria is set by the, the RSAs.
Yeah, yeah. RSAs.
But RSA are different. Yeah, but our conditional use permits can be set, the conditions so far can be set by us.
And then one of these standouts is this, look before you leave, you know, they talk about a conditional use permit is conducted by municipalities to implement innovative land use contracts, which is that special section in the, in the law.
Right.
And, so I don't think it's intended to mean all kinds of development, just the things that are innovative land use, which may include, but are not limited to timing incentive, space development, intensity, and root incentive, transfer of development and density and development rights, a plan of development, plus your development impact zoning, performance standards, flexible discretionary zoning, and the list goes on, but it's not saying, you know, everything that you might apply special exceptions to.
Well, we could, and what he's saying is, we could remove some of the items under special exception in part of the zoning and use it with a conditional permit, if we put the conditions at, that it could be met. You know, we could remove them, but I wouldn't suggest doing that, they work fine under special exceptions. We're just talking about conditional use mainly right now, I was, to, for wetlands.
I, I put that out there, just for the discussion.
Good.
But it, yeah, it's good to discuss that, for sure, because they are basically the same.
Under the 67421, for referencing wetlands, would it not be prudent for us to solicit from the conservation commission any suggestions as to how to minimize impact in the, you know, if someone comes through and is looking for that kind of condition?
It definitely would be wise for us to talk to them about what the conditions have to be in order to issue conditional approval, because, you know, there may be certain circumstances. Somebody's going to come in and want a dredge and fill permit to put a driveway across, something like that, so we're going to have to know what conditions are there so that they can do that. And yeah, you still own the conservation commission, yeah. So remember the conservation commission can get, you know, what they would accept as a special exception, if you will, that someone could put a driveway through there as long as they didn't fill X amount of land, or as long as they mitigated X amount of land over here, or whatever, whatever those conditions happen to be. They had no other options. No other options would probably have to be in there, or reasonable options.
And another thing I was wondering is, what, I know we usually don't take cost into a factor, but what if they did have another option to put in, we'll say, a six mile long road to get to their property, but going through the wetland was a lot more cost efficient for them to do it? You know, would we be able to put something like that in there?
I think cost should be added to the conditional use. Yeah, it should be, we normally do not do that, we don't have to do it in site plan, can, but we don't have to. We actually have to go under workhorse housing, but we don't have to anywhere else in the zoning. But yeah, that should be an issue, I think, for conditional use, just so that, you know, someone isn't just blown out of the water of costs for developing their own piece of property.
So I get really confused on this. So we're the planning board, we're doing site plans, something like that, and what a planning officer looks at, single family homes, right? We don't approve single family home construction. So let's say a single family home person wants, has your driveway situation, who, is it the code enforcement officer that navigates that permit? Because we don't get permits for single families.
You're talking about a conditional permit still, or?
Yeah, I mean, how does, how does that person get relief?
Are you talking about putting a driveway for, if I was to build a house on a piece of land, you have to cross the wetland?
Yes, you wouldn't come to the planning board for that, right? But so how do you?
You would, though.
But you would?
If we had a special.
You'd come here for the farm.
If we had, yeah, well, you normally wouldn't, but if it was a, something that fell under our conditional use, which was crossing a wetland. I think they'd still have to come to the planning board.
Because otherwise they'd be going to the ZVA for that, right?
A variance, and they may do it.
They'd be in the areas, so instead of that, they'd come to us.
If we had that, yeah. Just remember a while back, somebody wanted to build on that Class 6 road off in Swansea Lake, that goes up to Towneville, and they came in here to see if they'd be allowed to do that now, they were going to go about doing that, which obviously never became anything.
But they could have gone to the ZVA, but they would say Class 6 road.
Well, the only one down that particular case that could have authorized would be this wetland.
Because it's a Class 6 road.
The only one. That's changing, there's some legislation on that now, too.
Yeah.
The first, the first step in that, in that scenario, is to go to Select Board to see if you can approve the roadway. The only way you can build on a Class 6 is if you approve the roadway to Class 5, which is what's happening off of, for ABU off of Christian Hill Road right now.
Yeah, you check, there's going to be some legislation on that, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, as of right now.
Yes, as of right now, yeah.
This, this example of, I'm bringing up with the new statute, zoning statutes that we just approved on wetlands, that's going, we're going to have to consider that as to how close you can be to wetland, to what, and to what degree you can infringe, say you're within that 75 foot area, or how are you?
75 foot wasn't passed, so.
I thought it?
No, no, it wasn't. That wasn't offered to the voters to vote on, we're not going to work on that one. It was just that there was no, well, it's in the new zoning now, there's no, you can't cross a wetland, you can't have a dredge and fill permit like you used to have from the state, you can't cross it, no filling at all for wetlands, and there, I guess you can't have a fence there anymore, you can't have utilities there anymore, you can't have a bunch of stuff that used to be.
So if you can't cross the wetland to get to your island for building, okay, where's, where, and how do we handle the relief on that?
Of course. Now it's a variance, because we don't have conditional use permits, so it's a variance. Now, yeah, courts, if they don't give a variance, but they go to the, the ZVA first for a variance, like they did on the Sapporo Drive, prior to the vote, you know, they got their variance anyways, and so they're all settled there. But it's the same thing, they need to cross that wetland to get onto their property, but, so that's what they're ready for, we can do.
Yeah, and if ZVA doesn't get a relief fail, we have reconsideration, you know, when the ZVA turns it up, then they're going to go to security court. And actually, if it's a house that you built, to the housing board.
Oh, good, yeah, yeah. What's your cost? I don't know. So yeah, for conditional use permits, again, we'll just have to see what uses such as crossing a wetland, maybe utilities in a wetland or crossing a wetland, something like that, they might, we might issue a conditional permit for, or any other examples anybody can think of. We'll have to figure out what those examples should be.
I'll only use the whatever it is. I'll only use the whatever it is.
Yeah, and when we have those examples? We'll decide right here.
We want to go beyond just the wetlands, all right? We want to look at the rest of them, see where it makes sense.
Rest of what, what do you mean?
Do all the rest of the special exceptions that we have.
No, we're, special exceptions, we're going to, I think we should leave special exceptions just as they are, but there are special exceptions, they work, they have one anyway, but we're trying out conditional permits for the wetlands district because of change so drastically. We have to get some.
I wouldn't, my thinking beyond to see what else I could think of.
Yeah, well, let's, we'll keep it simple first, I think, probably if we do conditional permits, we'll see how it works out on the wetlands, and.
It's testing.
Yeah, test it there, and.
You would have to do something so we can, you know, people have to have relief.
They do, you know.
We need to protect the wetlands, it's no doubt about that, but people need a relief done.
And they will, yes, that's what we're doing. They have variance now, but they'll have, hopefully, a conditional permit afterwards, really, but if we decided to, you know, to change over all the special exceptions in the zoning, we'd have to come up with criteria for them all, as to how they would be better than now, ZVA sees.
It could be a level going, that's for sure.
It would be, yeah, but it's criteria, I mean, ZVA has criteria.
One of the limits, too.
There would be, yes.
The bills are, I've been in the governor's ear right now, the legislation, that's why this stuff is all coming out.
So we should probably, we tend to try to set a date to get together with the conservation committee and, you know.
And the conservation commission can also just get together themselves and come up with something and just pass it back.
But, but I think, I think they're going to get.
When we get to that, yeah.
I'd rather have a joint meeting.
We need to get together.
Than something being totally dependent on me, I mean, I'm, you know, I don't like that position.
So, well, yeah, we need to have a joint meeting, maybe a few joint meetings, because there's more than just conditional permit to discuss with the conservation commission. But the way I'm thinking about it is that we need to have a bunch of stuff to discuss. You know, you guys come up with ideas, we come up with ideas, and we've got a list together, but then it's time, I think anyways, for a joint meeting to get together and discuss all that business, iron something out, go back to the drawing board a few times, and then do something good.
I agree.
I feel like every time I think about it, I just come up with more questions than answers, so it would be nice to hash it out, you know, as a grill. So, you know, I know that will give us some concrete things to think about, but I prefer not, like walking to decisions, it's a good chance to.
Talk, doesn't have to be that complicated, I mean, yeah, we're, basically, we're trying to issue relief to people who need it.
Yeah, it's a principle, but that it's the process.
It's the process.
Yeah.
And again, the process isn't any more, shouldn't be any more complicated than what we normally do here anyway, you know, seeing the applications, and it should be a little bit easier, although we do the same with our site plan, we have site plan regulations, we go by the regulations, we weigh it against what the applicant brought in, we take a look if it meets it, and then got it. The conditional permit or use permits will be about the same thing, they come in, we want to do this, so we weigh it against a criteria, well, you have to have, you have to not have an underlying tier land, you have to not be able to fill in more than X amount of area, whatever that criteria might be, five or six criteria there, if they've met them, then the planning board issues the permit.
Oh, we want to have a, there should be a window for the conservation commission to do a layer of review as well, right?
Oh, yeah, and there would be, just like the review of site plan.
So they would look at the important to us properties?
Hopefully, yes, yeah, hopefully they do before we do, so they have recommendations too, because, yeah, they're a part of it, for sure. And then if it meets your criteria, if it meets your criteria, then the planning board has to issue the permit, we can't, you know, pick and choose, applicants will get a permit and don't get a permit, it's, that's what we have the criteria, if you match it, you got it, if you don't, you're out.
Well, I just wanted to mention that in the past, we've run into situations where we've had applications come in, and we haven't had conservation input in fact until late, so it'd be, you know, somehow we should be making it so that anything that would possibly entail input from conservation commission goes there first before we even see it.
Well, we added that into our site plan review regulations, that if the conservation commission hasn't seen the application yet, then the planning board will automatically continue it, and that's, we can open up and accept that it's continued to continue to the conservation commission.
But if we do, no, I can't recall, did we say that we would be able to, or we would still accept the application and it is complete? Because as soon as you do that, the clock starts.
It does, but again, you know, if we can't do it in 65 days, and the applicant wants to extend it, it's fine, if, if they don't want it, then they get whatever decision the board takes, I mean, that's how it works, 65 days, and yeah, it may start at then, but if the applicant wants to come in and submit the application and get going on it, and we say, well, yeah, we aren't going to accept that because the conservation commission hasn't seen it, that's not fair to the applicant, I mean, they might want to be going and starting on permits and that type of stuff. So the planning board, and the planning board can and should accept that it is complete, obviously, if it is, it is a no, but then the applicant can be aware that, yes, conservation commission is going to have a look at it and weigh in on it as well, and we've got 65 days to run and hoping through the process.
So when we write our conditional use ordinance, is it the ordinance? Is it, are, are any changes amended, are we, is there a way to process it?
Well, I think we could call it whatever we want, but it's an amendment to our zoning ordinance.
When we draft that, do we incorporate the policies and practices of our site plan review, in that it's capturing the requirement that the conservation commission shall, you know, look at before we?
We can if we want, that can be one of the criteria on there. If the conservation commission hasn't seen it yet, then you weigh it in one of those five or six, whatever criteria it is.
So the fact that we have that in our site plan review process doesn't necessarily mean that it's incorporated in the zoning, unless we actually incorporate it.
It probably would, because it'd come with an application.
Okay.
And those regulations cover the applications in a big part.
I can see.
It is, but it doesn't have to, I mean, it can be.
I want to start to be.
And it won't be, keep it simple.
So, you know, I mean, our example of railing the land bridge, you know, if people can access their billable part of their line, it's, to me, it's nothing what, it's how, right? How are you doing that? right, how are you doing that, because the big difference is just dumping a lot of filling and variance at our right, that we got a bridge, versus creating something where we're still able to permeate through, you know, whatever, whatever, you know, those wetlands are doing, they should be able to continue to do.
And that can be part of the criteria.
Right, and I don't know if there's like a best practice or...
Well, they still have to get a dredge and fill permission from state regardless, the state oversees all of wetlands, we have ordinance on it, but the state is still oversees. So if, if we gave them a conditional permit, they'd still have to get a permit, dredge and fill permit from the state in New Hampshire, if they didn't get that, then they couldn't go forward, even though they got our conditional permit, so, yeah, it's just...
And that would be covered in that state permit?
I'm not sure exactly, you know, they look at it case by case, but I'm not exactly sure if they were to look at that, we can make it more stringent here to do what you're saying, you know, there should be ways to, you know, like the water, obviously, they would look at drainage, that's one of their things anyway.
I mean, if, if you block the flow of water, it creates other problems.
Yeah, yeah, I know, it's...
What the people does is a good example, it doesn't take much to do that, and so we have French drains around our homes and things like that, right?
So, Anna, this is a question about the degree of technical support we could get on this sort of topic, a question, I, another question I have is, I view wetlands as bowls, you know, that, that hold water until it's allowed to sort of disperse out, or it stays in that area, but so many of our wetland areas are probably co-occur with areas that are within our, areas that are protected by FEMA, the flood maps, floodplain maps, is it possible for us to get a map of the town that would show tax parcel, you know, show lots, but also show an overlay of wetlands as identified by St. Moose Wood, for example, okay, you know, or, or there's a state layer for wetlands too, I think.
Yeah, basically.
And a layer that shows the FEMA designated, what is it, like A1 district, or you can't build there anyway because you're gonna get flooded out?
I can do that, alright?
Yeah, so, I mean, could we, do you think we could get like a working map that's big enough?
No. Very worried if it's a big map like that, I mean, this is, there's a reason why it lives on like GIS, like on a computer, because like you really need to have that detail, if I print it out, it's gonna be...
Just be mud?
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's not gonna be real, I don't think.
So if I were to talk to, you know, in your office, you could perhaps shoot me a copy of that that I could put on my computer and look?
Ah, you can go look, you can look it right now, phone too.
Well, I mean, just in light, because I don't...
Yeah, yeah, we can access it.
Just trying to think of that.
You can access it at home now.
Well, I tried, and it's...
You can come in to the office tomorrow, I can sure you have the good...
Okay.
Yeah, if you guys aren't, I'll be there till noon tomorrow.
Okay, I think I could.
Yeah, if I can sure you have access to GIS, turn on the two layers that you want, and then show you I've activated it right now, no problem.
Because I, I, you know, it helps for me to have this, you know, I can theoretically consider a situation where the island is in the growth going in and whatnot, but it could be that FEMA's not gonna, won't give you a mortgage to build there anyway because you're gonna be flooded, you know?
Yeah.
So, I just have to see some specific examples.
Look at some area that you're familiar with or something.
What's?
Look at an area you're familiar with or dig deeper, so...
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can look at, we can look at the Marcell property.
Okay, that'd be fun.
There's no flood plain, right, but there's wetlands, obviously.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
No problem.
So, what else? So we have Stacy here, who might be an alternate for our planning board who's looking into it, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah? What do you think? It's easy, right? No problem.
I got an...
You got the hardest question of the day.
Yeah, I have to confirm that Snugio is not coming back.
Yeah.
He has a big year.
Well, and he's, I don't think, I don't think he's going yet, he's in the confirmation yet.
It didn't, his appointment didn't run out yet?
No, no, next year, I think, just a year.
Yeah, was it three years, was it?
Yeah, so I need to call him, I need confirmation from him, he's not coming back, I gotta make sure of following our rules of procedure. I don't know if he needs to be expelled or whatever.
I'm not sure if he's talking about...
Yeah, I just resigned, I have a letter of reservation, like, hi, Michael Snugio resigned.
And that is an email, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I said, that would...
Okay, we'll see. So, what else?
Some, yeah, some, I mean, some, some virtue you brought up in the past, but is John Lesser, is he doing anything on that property?
Which part was that? I don't know, I'm bad with names, I don't know.
Lesser is over there in the ten, landscaping business.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think he's doing that.
Well, he's in an avenue, he was gonna build, build, he's got one little shack that I don't know if he got it covered or not, but it's a little small building.
The larger building, and we're gonna build a residential...
Apartments?
Yeah, the traveling nurses, he has a gun, eh, he's broke off for that.
Call Chris. Call Chris. Oh, yeah, yeah.
I just don't know when his time is gonna expire, right? He's gonna be here looking for...
Well, he's, he's done the substantial improvement there, because he did all his fill work at the driveway end, and I still think he's run the business on it, so he's beyond that.
Is he?
I wouldn't say it, but...
Did he put in his drainage and stuff like that, too?
Yeah, oh, yeah, they got the big swale in there, he knew all that before, he could have celebrated and settled and filled it there, so they've done quite a bit on that property so far.
I do remember that the, I thought it was gonna be delayed, which they have said.
Yeah, and it was like a big building, it's also moved.
Someone let me mention that? Yeah, well, whenever he gets, came in for his application, I didn't know that, I've told my, yeah.
Yeah, I was just curious, because I can see he has a few landscaping materials and put the blocks to, you know, hole it and stuff in their cribs, but I expect it's a building or foundation or something.
Maybe he don't have to build it, who knows?
Yeah, if he, if he doesn't, obviously, prove that rock pretty well for somebody to come in there and do something with it, so...
It's not like the planning board is gonna force him to build the building up, I mean, he doesn't want to build it in that way.
The other thing, when are we gonna stop tackling the impact fee thing, wait till we get done with it?
That's, that's the sign to you, you've seen the, you must have read it in your office, it's in the impact, you have a section under there.
Oh, of course, I've read that part.
And so you'll need to, if you're gonna pursue it, you'll need to decide, from the bookkeeper, to see how that's gonna work, because it has to be recorded in each year.
Yeah.
And the bookkeeper has to say how much was, you know, doled out for this part of this project, and all, you know, how low...
That's up to the administration to worry about that, we set up, it has to be a zoning requirement.
It does.
We have to figure out what our fee schedule is, and my recommendation would be not put it on home builders, like some poor young family that can just barely afford to build their own, doesn't need another $10,000 on top of that, because I think we'd go away from residential, we could go away with workforce housing or three-family homes, you know, anything above two-family.
And anything that the planning board, right, says, commercial, planning board does not say.
Because, you know, we're talking about needing a water situation over here, well, if we had impact fees in, a lot of money could be going in for that, for that.
Well, maybe, maybe not, because we don't own a water company yet, I mean, not with the impact fees, I mean, I don't know.
But with this other stuff, he was talking about with the zoning for the lots and stuff that I've been talking about, what's the next step the legislature is gonna do, I said, I talked about this two years ago, that we're gonna push this issue, because I'm here, being up in the Republican Party.
The issue being what?
The issue of building houses and of the developers that are pushing the state to rewrite the zoning laws themselves.
Yeah.
So they've actually got a committee down, they want to push laws this year, they've got a committee set up to say, we're gonna study it, and maybe we need to bring all these buildings right to the state level, so we won't be deciding zoning after all, it's gonna be one size fits all for every town. Well, I hope you're wrong, what's the, well, I do too, well, I fight, I go to Conker at least five to 10 times a month, okay, tell me, I don't think Swansea wants this. Also, because the guys are here, they're putting in a, a legislation now that says if I can't go there, as a planning board member of the town of Swansea can testify.
There's safety.
No town council can testify under such, oh, any, you know, any town official, city...
In that capacity, because you're a town council, you can still go testify there, it's only for non-capacity. I would think so, too.
Well, White Bradley went and made one bet on this, with the welfare thing, okay, we have to testify for that, say we need some kind of residency requirement before we stop paying these bills to people, okay, so we went and testified on that, and he did it as the city, as a town administrator, and if that's wrong, we tell them in Hawaii, I don't think, because who better than us here, listen to the people, what they want for the town? We have, we have the master plan we go by, we have people, Mark and Jay came in when building over there and wanted us to change some zoning, which we did, so I'm trying to put those things to those people up there, last year when I was up there doing this, one of the legislators, we said, well, those don't pass through, we don't want to take over zoning, so I was up there, this year, really, on eighty-four, I said, really, well, what's this, you're telling me that you don't want to take over, but you're doing it?
I think if you're gonna testify, you have to, you have to stay in front of the planning board that you guys all agree on, I will mind that, I will say that, I don't think I'm fully in that.
I, I have passes by my friend, he says it's fine, I says I'm a member of the planning board, but these are my views, yeah.
You say you trust his white friend?
No, I have to buy my friend. No, I always make sure that they know these are my views, and from what I've talked to people in town, these are what they're telling me, so...
Yeah, that's a good, I mean, obviously, why you can't...
I, I'm not gonna say I'm the spokesman for the planning board, because I'm not.
Well, you could, though, you could.
You could if everybody had agreed to what I was saying.
You can do that.
But I do, you wait, wait, wait. But more, they gotta have more pushback, the only reason why the state library is not gonna get closed off is because a whole bunch of librarians and people went up there and screamed at it. That's the only way you get things done, you have to go testify.
And build proper property.
And we have a great representative up there that's trying to help us, flies on that, that committee, the government committee, municipal government committee.
Well, that's good.
Well, that's good, yes, because he agrees most of the time.
Doesn't mean that it'll get too far, is that what you're saying?
Only one vote out of about fourteen, and then when it goes to, well, what, I guess what bothers me the most is some of this is being passed by voice vote, they're not recording the vote. I don't think anything should be passed on a voice vote up there.
And by this you mean taking the zoning away from the town, is that what I'm talking about?
Well, yeah, that, I don't think any legislation, anywhere should ever be, at that level, should be by voice vote, they should be recorded vote, so that if we disagree with our legislators, we have a chance to prime them and then vote them out of office if we don't like what they're doing, you know, but they hide that sometimes, when they know it's not working.
So what legislation of concern are you looking at?
Well, right now, it's eighty-four.
Which is what?
That's the one that says if you have storage and water, you cannot require a bigger lot than twenty-two square feet.
Lot restriction.
And there's another one on there, the lot restriction is, you have to take fifty-one percent of the rest of your residential area, any place you have a single-family home, okay, fifty-one percent of that has to be one-twenty-five acres, about three, we have three that are...
I'll just say two.
Well, I thought I saw it somewhere, it wasn't three for the test that you reduced. The legislature did an amendment in the last couple of days, but what was passed, from what I saw, but even two, still, we have three, we have...
Lot answer.
Yeah, so while Keen has even one, they used to have a five, and I think they're done.
They didn't have a five up there.
So...
I don't think, so they can change all those rules all they want, don't extend the sewer, and all...
Well, guess, guess what, you know what's coming down the road, I was gonna mention that, it's coming down the road, you gotta tell towns, okay, now you have to put in storage water, here, 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 and there.
How do they force you to do that?
How do they force you to pay for all your local welfare, they mandate, we have, our budget this year is $280,000 for our local welfare, and we have to pay for it, get no help from the state, and if we go over budget, we better find the money. And what we've had some legislation, our friend Jim Rose, representative in seventeen, actually introduced some to have a residential requirement, but we can't do it, of having at least thirty to ninety days being a resident, because what's happening is the developers are taking their applications...
Oh, yeah, so she was in here from Wrightsville, from...
And giving them the form that you are required to have, giving them at the same time, and telling them, you can't pay your bills, go to the town of Swansea, this is the guy that sued us three times, and he wants to run for state, as a US senator this time, he called me when to set up a, a talk and a meeting with our Republican convention in town, I refused him, she said, I'll call the state GOP, yeah, call him all you want, that's my town, unless my people or my, my committee says they want to talk to him, he's not coming.
Speaking of the individual, in the, the airport, where it's closed now, have you received the danger restriction part of that deed? I have no idea.
It, it said that they have to be senior housing, because right, right?
Sixty-two, sixty-two-year-olds, and that was supposed to be once it closed, that was supposed to be included in the danger restriction.
Yeah.
So can you verify that that's been done?
Very easy, now about common, right? Oh, yes, I can verify.
Yeah, so you should verify, I just called the common.
Right, isn't that what we decided?
If, when they close, that's when a new deed should have been, been gotten.
Did they close?
Yes, they closed, okay.
Now is, now is not the time to, like, you know, call me at the office, I can look into it, sorry.
How about pallets, do I call you at the office to complain about pallets?
Chris, go to the office, don't call me, I'm gonna go send you to Chris.
That's transferred to Chris.
As I need a pallet, I'll go take a pallet myself.
Is that the point, that we could, if we wanted to, the points to make?
I don't see why not, if I say pallets, I have a road, I need a pallet. Yeah, if you guys need something from the office, call me, because I, from here, I can't give anything, so I can look into it, but send me an email, that helps, because I can just keep it flagged in my email to look into, so now to remember, I'll go back to my minutes, I'll see the minutes, and I'll remember your check, but...
Call Chris.
For the pallets, you have to call Chris, for anything else, if you need something from us, if that's something that we have in writing.
Any kind of enforcement, call Chris.
Any kind of...
The planning board has no authority to enforce these rules.
Planning board, you just...
I'm just hoping you'll carry, you know, do my word for it.
I won't, no, I'm sorry, I won't, I'm focused.
But the town, we all, the town, revoke the laws and zoning ordinance, that's local legislative body, we voted in, planning board administered them, and the select order they're designated, which is the co-endorcental officer now, enforces them, so planning board has no authority for enforcing them.
Yeah, if you see any weird buildings going up, Chris, if you see one, that might not be permanent.
Somebody along the grade, you could talk to Chris, go check that out.
You'll talk to Chris.
Send him an email, please send him an email.
I haven't, I haven't found a couple of dump sites for him yet, I need to find them all the time, program.
He likes to start records early and often, so send him an email, that helps to keep the track.
So, we're almost ready for a German, before then, if anybody is interested in my suggestion of the impact fees, I was just trying to find out, it's six seventy-four something.
Seven forty-four, am I calling?
Yeah, it's running there, so I suggest you just read it and see what it entails.
Chris and I are both in agreement that we want that to be.
Yeah, you guys don't count, you don't...
No.
They, they can, they can help.
No, they'd be administering it, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
It wouldn't be helpful.
There is, there is this thing that you have to look at, we can put a waiver for somebody we know is very poor or something like that, or there's a legitimate reason why they're waiving the fees.
It probably, it should be stick away from that now, it only, it only should be across the board, yeah, not necessarily residential loans, we don't see them in here, right, we see the virtual stuff, and the multifamily, and that's going to get the impact fees, but we just have to decide how to charge the impact fees, you know, what percentage for here or there, and they also have to be tied to something that that project will impact on the town, you know, we can't get an impact fee for something over here in West Swansea to help build water or sewer or more, it doesn't work that way, it has to show that it has impact on that particular part of infrastructure for the town. Or the water or sewer or something like that, but it's gotta be for that part of the town, it can't be for something else, but read, read it through, it's interesting to me, or if you're not tired, it'll make you tired.
You, you would have to prepare a check, didn't you? I have a check, but we don't want to use evidence.
No, no, we're gonna do it all, we'll do our own, right, but it's a good starting point, but you do your own, and decides.
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't, you know, apply to the police department or the entire district.
A portion by calls, per, you know, if it's like a multifamily area, they would figure how many calls are...
And what, it, it works something like the CIP, where you have a town set up, and somebody comes in and bills something, okay, you have a chart of, say, this type of business has a one-point-one, or one-point-one per square foot, like dollars per square foot, have a twenty thousand square foot building for dollars per square foot, and they have to give twenty thousand dollars.
But, or, like you were saying, if you can't show that it impacts twenty thousand dollars on that particular item that you're charging, but you see...
Everything can be lined up for the different accounts, so each, each time you do the fee, you go to separate accounts, it has to go just to one account.
It doesn't, anyway, it's right, because, because it has to be specific.
We do that, we have housing or apartment buildings, how many children are there going[1773.76] When you have multifamily housing or apartment buildings, how many children are there going to school district? So our portion of the cost of the school district has to be portioned out that way.
Yeah, can.
Fire department, you know, all that, do you have to have new fire equipment because of this? Well, we have to buy more distributors, we have to buy another fire engine, or whatever, we just, we have to build a new fire station. Yeah.
But I'm just saying, it, read, read all, read that whole thing, though.
You see, it's kind of like complicated, but I think it's needed. It should have been done ten years ago, it might be, but it's just like.
I don't know.
We would have had a better shot in proving this water route, the air, the storage.
Perhaps, perhaps not, hard to say, because we wouldn't have gotten $6 million with.
When West Swansea primary community, and they, they kind of had to have their own water, right?
No, they didn't.
Or the resort, one of the other.
They, the departments over there, the councils, well, they tapped out of the West Swansea Water Company and Sewer Department over there.
Well, see, then you had to say, well, we tapped in, I would tap out, we better extend our water, we better.
But you actually have to extend it in order to.
Well, you, you charge the money.
I mean, the water.
Extend, yeah.
You have to actually do it before you can charge for it.
Well, you, you can charge for it, get it in, and then do it. As long as you do it, you have six, six years to do it, to use those funds, for whatever purpose is needed, as long as you impact that developer.
Right, exactly.
But it doesn't have to be done before you have it.
This will be done before the thing goes online.
So they, no, I have, well, you don't collect the total amount. You set the fees here, okay?
You set that?
The fees here, according to our charter developer.
Charter, you're right.
Okay, you charge them here, then when they get occupational.
Or when it becomes.
Becomes, if you don't do occupational, so that when it becomes used for its purpose, then you collect the fee.
Right, yeah, only when they finish the product.
Right.
Make a motion to a jury.
Second. We're locked in. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, can you take the same eye?
Eye.
All those vote?
No, the eye.
Officially.